Okay, I'd like to call the select board meeting to order on Tuesday, February 15th at 6:30 PM. Bobby Holland is in the audience.
In the house.
Nice to have you here Bobby, Travis, Randy, Jim, Mike, there we go. Any public comments from anybody in our audience? Anybody in the world of Zoom, Eric DeRozier?
After we sent agenda items in, I did get notification from the state that the Ursa grants were awarded. There were 64 total applications with 12 awards being made and unfortunately, we were not among them for our expansion of the parking lot at the town forest. But it was in our budget as part of the plan anyway to be moving forward with that project anyway. So we will be moving forward with that as soon as the snow melts and the road crew has some time to help us out with that. But no Ursa grant unfortunately.
That's too bad, it sounds like it's very competitive.
Yeah, all the projects that were selected were of a much different style than what, I mean ours was a parking lot and a lot of the other stuff was some really impactful trail work and things like that. So not super shocked, it's still disappointing. We'll continue going after any of them that come out. There's a recreational trails grant that's up to $50,000. So we'll have a letter of interest in on that for a project by March 1st.
Thank you, and we'll talk to you later then if you don't have anything else. Kevin. Kevin Stein.
Hello.
Hi Kevin.
Hi.
You had your hand up?
I did not.
Oh, that's the
Well, it's That hand? Oh, is it? Okay, sorry, it was on our end. We'll talk to you later, I'm sure too. Anybody else with any other comments? All right, hearing none, we're going to jump into highway, road, town road and bridge standards, Travis.
Road and bridge standards. The grant assignment allows me to apply for grants and that and such from the state for our class two road.
We do this every year.
Yep.
So if there's, is there any discussion about this?
I'll be applying.
Thank you.
For a bathing grant and we've already applied for a road and inventory grant because the state's taken that over instead of instead of
Okay, well, good, I hope we get those grants too.
Yep.
So would somebody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we sign the road, town road and bridge standards document prepared by Travis.
Second by Dan, any, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. The next item up on the agenda is the bridge and culvert standards. There it is. Certification of compliance. Oh, hold on a second. Where's that document? This is the Yeah, and then this one is the, another page. Which one does that go with? This one here. Section three. Yes, okay, so let's get rid of that one, okay. You can sign that one. The next one we're going to talk about is the certification of compliance for town, road and bridge standards and network inventory. Any discussion about this? Any explanation?
It falls into the same, it was one of the same, I have to say, you have email us.
Okay.
That we sign the certificate of compliance for road, town and bridge standards and network inventory prepared by Travis.
Second by Dan, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Okay, the next item on the laundry list here is the certificate of highway mileage year ending 2/10/22. This includes class three roads and legal trails, those two roads.
That's the correct changes.
With the Cheney Brook Loop.
Yeah, with the Cheney Brook Loop and Cheney Brook Trail.
Okay. All right, anybody have any questions about the highway certificate of highway mileage? Okay.
Make a motion that we sign the certificate of highway mileage for the year ending February 10, 2022 as prepared by Travis.
Second again by Dan, any other discussion? All in favor? Aye too. Finish up the signing. And then we'll jump into All right, so now we also have on the agenda the response to a recent email on transfer station rates and waste. And this is an email that Kevin Stein sent to Travis and to me. And it basically goes through a laundry list of fees and, and that kind of thing. So do we want to read all of this or do we, you want to address some of the points that Kevin?
Of course.
Okay. I don't know where you want to start Travis.
I will start with the tires that were mentioned, like I'm, I'm going to be in total agreeance with them. I think we, and that's, that's my plan, I'm going to just want to let you guys that I am, know that I'm looking into this. I will come back to you with some rate changes if, you know, for approval. But I, I agree, we're they aren't paying for themselves to get rid of.
You'd already come to us about tires. I don't know if that was in a budget commit, committee meeting or
Yeah, they were
Yeah, that
We had known at some point that they were going to be trying to get rid of as it was, but with waste management's assistance and their new dumping station that they have. This helped, but for what we're charging at our station to what it costs to get rid of them, they're just not covering themselves.
Okay.
You know, and, and, and there was some expressed that some changes should have been made along the lines of trash too. I'm going to call around and see what other transfer stations are doing for prices on, on the regular garbage appliances and all that.
So you're going to basically take a, a survey of everything?
Yeah, I'm going to look at everything as a whole and then I'll bring back some numbers to you guys and for review.
Okay.
Possibly change.
So no, no decisions now, just you're working on?
I am, I am going to be researching, yes. I do agree with what Kevin had to say, it needs to be this change.
Okay. Kevin?
Yeah, I could just add in, the, the figures I took came off the Wyndham Solid Waste Management District homepage. Like Dover, they've got a redesigned website. If you go to the solid waste district's homepage, on the front of it, you'll see a map of our region with all the individual towns that are within it. So if you click on any one of those towns, that town's info will pop up and then you can look at what their hours are, what their rates are. And this is all information that is recently updated by mostly John Fay and the staff at the solid waste district office in Braderboro. So that's, that's what I based my information on. I, I talked to those guys monthly at their meetings, so just, just to let you know, you, you don't really have to call around, you can look right at their website and pretty, pretty easily access what everybody in the district is doing.
Thank you Kevin, that is a huge time saver and it's an easy way to get, get that information. I'm sure Travis will use that. So we will have this on an agenda item sometime in the future.
Wonderful.
Thank you, thank you for going to meetings and also bringing that information back to us. Anybody have any questions about this right now? It's, it's just basically our, our rates are lower than most surrounding towns, so. And we have, we have drive through, through service which most towns don't have. Do not, which is, which is, you know, particularly in the weather is really a great thing to have, so. All right, are we good with highway Travis, do we have anything else?
I have received numerous emails about our scrap metal dumpster too. That have been concerned, though, if I've been called, emailed from the public about what's going on with highway running with that. So
So what is that, what is going on with that?
We have received a bill for $2,000 from Atkins because they've since come and removed the metal dumpster because they haven't emptied it since November of 2021. Steve's scrap metal has been taking everything, everything. Yeah, 2020.
Okay, so it's been over a year and a
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it's been over a year and they charge us a rental fee of $200 per month. So with bill was somewhere around $2,000 or just over. I did call those, them back and apologize and everything and I'm trying to, I've, I've kind of liked some kind of an answer if you're able to give me one as to how I should proceed with this if you want.
Sorry, hold on. So um, the, the scrap metal.
Yes.
If the original, I, I missed the name. The company that, not Steve, the
Atkins.
Atkins.
Yep.
Did they pay us for any scrap metal?
They did.
They did.
Yep, they covered the trucking fee plus we got a little bit back.
Okay, did, does Steve pay us?
No.
No. Okay, so that seems
No, but he's listed as our scrap hauler on that, on that website that Kevin Stein had just mentioned.
How did that happen?
Yeah. Exactly. So that's why, that's why, if I had some confirmation from you guys as to Atkins will bring the dumpster back, I've talked with them. They finally bring one back. WTE down in Greenfield will bring one up as well. Or you can stay with Steve. Whatever you guys want to build.
I, I'd like you to confirm the pricing.
Okay.
And the pricing of what scrap metal, metal is now, so we have
I have, it's, it's, it's anywhere from four to six cents per pound. But, and we get paid at whatever market rates. But the, generally the trucking fees are close to the same. They're, I believe Greenfield's a little bit more than, than North Adams, but.
I'd like to see a pricing comparison for like zero for Steve.
Yep.
Basically versus the, the other side of it in today's market, does that make sense?
Yep.
I agree.
Dan?
I spoke with Travis on the liaison for the highway department. And the other issue, also spoke with Marco, besides the town not receiving any money for this is however Steve got to be the hauling person. Are we responsible for him in terms of is he an employee now? Do we have any liability with him doing what we're doing?
He's his own business, but I don't believe so. Because he's his own entity, but but, I mean, he, he was getting rid of the appliances and stuff for us and
Yeah. Yeah, I'm just confused how it got changed on the, or, or added, or maybe it's something that they just added. I don't know how we had Sapansky on there as our scrap hauler. Yes, Joe?
Okay, so we, we paid a huge bill to
Just here.
So if they are willing to come back and they might give us credit for some of that rental or something. Have them come back, that would be our first option, if you understand what I'm Our second option is number one, Steve has to be have insurance, da, 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 all that stuff. Okay, that's the most important, but obviously their company to come up to pick it up and go. You can have people just like Dan just said. You know, we have to have a proper insurance, proper contract signed, so if the catch or bit, something happens, town is protected. So there's a couple of different things you'll look for, but I'm, I'm definitely wanting some sort of resolution on that, that's a big bill.
Dan?
Also, the dumpster that they left there was very easy for people to come behind and throw their stuff in. Now we have Steve's trailer which looks a little bit now that's appropriate, I think, for the town.
Okay.
Are there items that were going into that dumpster that Atkins wouldn't take? And so Steve was helping us by taking those items out, but now he's taking everything.
Right. Right, refrigerators, compressed gas tanks, all that other stuff, Steve took everything, not what it was.
So we're, so we're still going to rely on Steve or someone like him? Because there's things that are going to go in there that, or we have to tell people they can't put the things in there.
Or you will hire somebody to come in and drain the, drain the refrigeration units. We make a staging area for the refrigeration units and the tanks, have somebody come in and drain on it. You're already charging to get rid of them, I believe it on our rate, it says $18 a unit. To drain them, I've got a current rate, somewhere's around eight to $10 a, a unit to drain them properly. And then they can, once they're drained, you can throw them in with the scrap. Once you gather up 30 or 40 of them, or not even have to be that many, whatever our little area can hold. Have somebody come drain them, then we can throw them right in the metal box, no problem.
Dan?
So my head does have to be certified by the department of high maintenance station to take the free hand out of them.
I would assume that that, a company like that would
Any appliance person.
So I think you want to look at all, a lot of different scenarios. Also, how much extra, which, which scenario is the least labor intensive for our staff as well? Because that plays into it, so, and come back with a proposal Travis. Yes, Dan?
Chris does a very good job when people come with it, he tells them where to put it, so people just don't willy nilly throw them into the dumpster.
Right.
So that's been done very well.
And how long has the dumpster been gone?
That's Monday this week. Right now Steve's trailer is there and he'll take whatever, whatever is brought.
So you've heard all the concerns, insurance, environmental, everything. Look at it and, and there's a lot of variables and come back to us with a, a plan for the whole thing. With the rates, the new, the new rates and, and the plan for the scrap metal.
A proposed, a proposed, what you might get back in return.
All right. Any other questions of Travis? Okay, we're going to move on to economic development with Eric.
So a rather simple request, we would like to update the event sponsorship program to allow events that have happened, events that are in their second year and beyond only need to apply 90 days ahead of time instead of 108. So instead of six months, we'd like those events to be able to apply three months ahead of time because they've already happened and would have already done the bulk of their planning to pull off such an event.
Did everybody have a chance to look at this document that Eric sent over? Anybody have any questions about reducing the timeline for pre-existing, I guess, events?
Events with the tractor.
Yeah.
Why?
Eric, do you want to explain the one in particular that, that kind of triggered this? The bar, the sawmill?
Oh, right, okay, so well, actually there's two then, right? So the, the chamber actually just submitted their application for fireworks. Which if we went by the six month rule, they'd be past it right now and would not be eligible. Secondly, there's a concert, a, a rather large concert from what I'm told up at the sawmill who was in their first year last year and, and they would like to meet with us about what we can be doing to help them grow the event this year. And obviously my fir, the first thought that came to my mind was our event sponsorship program. But because even now with that event in August, they would still be outside of that six months in, to get any funding. My pro, like, I think, I think my biggest issue with the, with the six months for events that have already occurred more than once is that when we made the change to six months, I know why it was made, excuse me. But I don't know that the word got out well enough to begin with, so now that we are we, we keep saying this, but hopefully coming out of the other side of COVID and hoping to have events in Dover again. I don't want to see us lose events because of the way that this program is worded. I 100% understand the validity of, you know, asking a new event to come to us six months ahead of time to ensure that they have done the proper planning and, and preparation to make it a good event. But for events that have happened previously, I think, you know, us shortening that time to three months still allows plenty of time for them to be planning a second, third, fourth, whatever year. But also doesn't make them apply in January for something that's happening way down the road.
Any comments?
Sarah, I think that, I think that the 90 days is ample for, for a past, you know, an event that's already happened and that because one of the things that should go into the judging criteria is how well they pulled off the event, what, you know, we'll have some history to know whether it's an event that would be worth investing in.
Joe?
He's just going to go.
No grunting allowed, say.
It's
Use your words, Joe.
I don't mind shortening up, but there's a time delay in getting to a meeting and everything else and stuff like that and getting the information, so. Eric's fine with it, I just don't want to keep trying to shorten it up because I don't get, gives enough time to really give the event a good chance and get it out there. That's my only thing. And are they looking for funding? If they don't get the funding, do they not do the, you know, that part of the event? It's, it's a, it's just, it is fine.
So I think that
We've had problems within the past, this whole
I know.
It's a pain in the
But it's also something that we can change again if it, if it doesn't work, but like the fireworks. It was kind of a, everything's been a kind of moving target for a couple of years now. So I would like to make, allow events to come back and, and have our support. You know, and maybe when things settle down, hopefully someday, we won't have to do this. So, but in the interim, everything, you know, things, plans are made and plans are broken now, so. But we want to make sure it happens if we give them some money.
Or that we get our money back.
Yeah, or we get, that we get our money back, which is in the contract. If it doesn't happen, they have to pay us back. So would somebody like to, yes.
Have they had to do it for two years or more?
Oh, just more, okay.
So this would be the second year. All right. Jeanette?
On the last page, I don't know if you noticed Eric, the, where it says to submit electronically, it has the old sovereign at email address there.
Oh, there we go. A lot of people still use that sovereign at email address. All right, so is that it on the changes, Jeanette? So does somebody want to make a motion to adopt the new Dover event sponsorship program as revised with Eric making that one edit?
So moved.
Second. Any other discussion? All in favor? Unanimously kind of. All right, now anything else Eric? Thank you. We are going to need a motion to go into the board of liquor control. All in favor? Okay, so we have a ton of liquor licenses, catering permit and second town class licenses. We are not going to sign these till we're at the end of the meeting because there's 13 places that everybody has to sign. And it's going to take a long time and we're just going to say we're going to sign them and we're going to sit here and do it methodically so that we don't miss and Jeanette doesn't have to go running after us. That's right, so we're going to sign at the end, so of the meeting.
Before we, before we move, we should ask if Randy has any, and then I can move on.
All as one as
Well, if there's any that
Let's do, these are organized in groupages, so let's do the first and third, then the second and then the catering one.
So make a motion that we sign the first and third class licenses and outside consumption permits for Two Dogs LLC, DBA Dover Bar and Grill, KPLC Inc., DBA The Westover Inn, The Sawmill LLC, DBA Sawmill Bar and Table, and Deerfield Beverage Concepts, DBA Deer, Deerfield Bar and Bottle Shop.
Do I have a second?
Sure.
Now you can ask Randy.
Randy, are there any problems with any of those?
Any questions about any of these? I hear nothing? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, second class licenses.
Make a motion that we sign the second class licenses for Guest Convenience Services, Inc., DBA 7-Eleven and Deerfield Beverage Concepts, DBA Deerfield Bar and Bottle Shop.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Dan, second, any other, anything?
All set.
Okay. And the catering, all in favor? And we have a catering license?
I move that we sign the catering license for Deerfield Beverage Concepts, DBA Deerfield Bar and Bottle Shop.
Second.
Can I ask you to amend that to approve because we don't sign?
To approve the catering license for Deerfield Beverage Concepts.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor? All right.
Motion to come out of board of liquor control.
All in favor? Okay, we have the consent agenda which includes the minutes of February 1, 2022.
Move to approve the minutes of February 1, 2022.
Any changes, additions? All in favor? We have the warrants of February 8, 2020, 22 for $1,923,500, five, 1,900,000, 2, 923,587.25.
Move to approve the warrant of February 8 for $1,923,587.25.
Any questions about it? Yeah, and there's that, there, there is the bill for the, the storage container in there too.
And there's the, there's the bills from North Branch for the
For the meters.
And then I just wanted to clarify the fire department, it doesn't specifically stay on there, but it's for the regular meter and a bypass meter, right?
Yeah, two meters and two meters at the
Yeah, the one, the police department said specifically one of these is a bypass.
It did, yeah.
I just wanted to make sure.
Okay. Any other comments on the warrants? These are the ones that you, that Jeanette emailed everybody last week or, or Monday. No, last week, last week. All right, all in favor? All right, FYI, we have tomorrow night at 6 o'clock, a Zoom meeting only. The joint meeting between the Dover and Wilmington Board to talk about the Bytown marketing budget. Board to talk about the Bytown marketing budget. That's at six, be there on Zoom. Um, we also have a planning commission meeting on February twenty-eighth at six thirty PM and a Trails and Rec meeting on March eighth at six thirty PM. Is there anything else on the FYIs? Okay, we have any liaison reports? Sarah?
Um, for the efficiency Vermont grant, Travis has made appointments with two electricians, one of which has already met with, Donda.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and we're, Danda, and we're looking at the converting lighting, LED, converting lighting over to LED in one of three town buildings. Since the grants for four thousand will go with whichever one is as close to without going over $4,000.
Good, good, very good.
Also, in the assessive office, our new hire has had some complications medically, so she has not been able to start yet and we don't know the stats, so. I think we are working on it.
Okay.
Just to keep you informed.
No, thank you for that. I appreciate that.
You've got to help them, though.
I, yes, agreed. Okay. And also, our next minute meeting, which is from Town Meeting Day, March first, budgets finalized. We need to have every final figure we can have in there and we also need to refresh our memories on, on the budgets. We're going to look at the town meeting warrant. Uh, so there's a lot of things going on, so be prepared for getting back into budget mode. And we are also going to set the date for town meeting. Okay, and I don't, I'm not aware of an executive session? No, anybody? All right, I would like to join the meeting at seven hundred two PM. All right. All right, Joe, you start, right there.
Yeah.